I'd like to bring the meeting for September 5th to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Doug Kaufman, absent. Kimberly Lack.
Present.
Paul Alivas.
Present.
Charles Reno.
Present.
Dagney Stapleton.
Present.
Kevin Wiskey.
Present.
Jason Wusley.
Here.
At this time, I'll open public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on the request to speak form and file it with the secretary. Are there any public comments at this time? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll close this portion of public comments. The first action item will be the approval of the July 31st, 2013 workshop. Are there any abstentions or corrections at this time?
Yeah, I'll have to stand. I wasn't there.
Okay, can you state your name for the record?
Commissioner Reno.
Okay, any other corrections? Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Commissioner Wiskey.
Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Wusley.
Okay, I have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We have one abstention and five approvals. The next action item is the approval of the August 7th, 2013 regular meeting minutes. Do I have any? Is that right? Are there any abstentions or corrections? Do I have a motion?
Commissioner Wiskey, so moved.
Commissioner Wiskey, motions. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Reno, second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I have, let's see, six in favor and none opposed. Moving on to item number five, city council liaison reports. None at this time. Thank you. Item number six, presentation regarding Think Reno and Hot Topic Meetings. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Deanna Geshider for the Record Office of Communications and Community Engagement. I'm a new, not really new anymore, but a newer employee at the City of Reno that joined the team since November, coming up on a year, I suppose. Time flies. I'm here tonight to give you a brief presentation on what our office is up to. We, this presentation is centered around creating a comprehensive program that improves our citizen engagement outreach. It is one of the four priorities that has been designated by city council as something that they want us to focus on. So my department has been fast at work to redefine how we can reach out to citizens in a more innovative manner to provide a broader perspective. At this point in time, it requires you to come to a meeting and give feedback and we are busy at work trying to figure out new ways to reach additional and more people. So to give you a little background, on March 27th, we were requested by the city council to look at our neighborhood advisory board. As we looked into that, we, they also wanted us to pay attention to the community pride grant fund allocations and to look for additional ways to engage our citizens. Currently, the NAB program looks like this. NAB members are appointed by city council and there are eight NABS members are able to comment on city activities. We have land use neighborhood projects come and give updates and they are governed by the open meeting law. NAB input is provided to Planning Commission and city council to help guide, help you make your decisions and guide you. And the allocation for our CPG funds are also run through the NABS. NAB boundaries currently follow organic neighborhood rather than ward boundaries. Just to give you a little background, some of the successes that we've seen is that people enjoy and are able to know when the meetings are scheduled because they're predictable. They're accessible because they are located in their neighborhoods and residents that attend NAB meetings typically, they show up in the masses for controversial issues. The challenges include that during the economic downturn, we've seen a steady decline in participation. Project development has been less, so a lot of less numbers of people are attending. And it's significantly less. The percentages are like 57% of the meetings have either been canceled or had, had less than three people in attendance. Boy, somebody. That was not me. Did you see that ghost? The formal meeting structure, it makes it a little intimidating for neighborhood type folks to be able to participate. So the formal structure restricts spontaneous feedback. So we started with what does the program look like today? What's working? What isn't working? And where can we improve? And what we came to was this existing, the existing program, the way that you can, right now, citizens can be engaged with our government is through NABS, through our Citizens Institute. Just heads up, Wendy, you're, through newspaper postings, through postcards, through onsite postings and Reno.gov. The proposed program that I'm going to talk to you about today includes this lengthier list. We are proposing that we have, well, right now, we have a task force made up of our neighborhood ambassadors. We are engaging in town halls that begin, we're testing them this October. We started, and I'll talk about what each one of these are, so rather than go into detail, I'll just give you a brief overview. Hot topic meetings, online citizen engagement tool, some grassroots outreach. We'll continue with the Citizens Institute. We'll work on a public awareness campaign. And the reason why I bring that to your attention is that currently, we aren't doing any advertising or marketing traditional type outreach to make people aware of when the meetings are occurring or how they can be engaged with us. So we view that as an opportunity and we were successful in getting some funding to help get the word out. Postcards, onsite project postings, and then most importantly, we're doing a complete overhaul of the Reno.gov website. Right now, a lot of great information, but really, really difficult to navigate and find your way through. So we're diving into the pages with development and community development and their department to look at how we can get better in that section of the site. So this is the, basically, we came back to council and we presented this plan, a very, a long, lengthy presentation, and we had a lot of public comment and feedback. And we received direction from them on May 15th to, to basically dive into a transition plan. So between now and December, we are continuing with the NABS, but we're also testing some of the new products. So we are, we've been having task force meetings. We are having town halls in October to see how those work and how many people come and if the informal structure works or doesn't work. The hot topic meetings are more designed for if, if baseball is a hot topic, because we know people attended NABS for controversial issues, we thought it was an opportunity for us to host meetings just based on a hot topic rather than have NABS every month that people weren't coming to. It was a better use of resources and a better use of our citizens' time to host a hot topic meeting in conjunction with the hot topic, the controversial issue. In that meeting, we've been pretty strategic and we have tested one where we take the meeting notes and we do run it through Planning Commission for your information. So the hot topic meetings are a very important component to your process. We owe council a report back in six months, so in December, we'll report back with the feedback of the task force. So all of the leaders are meeting with us on a regular basis and we are taking section by section to get more in-depth citizen feedback. And then we're testing all of the product, products that we've proposed to see how they work and if we are, in fact, having a broader perspective and getting additional people to show up that weren't, you know, able to show up and adding the online component. So then we'll come back to council in December and they will give us direction on, you know, what the community engagement program will look like based on our experience, our feedback, and our recommendation. So I've kind of alluded to these. I'll try to be brief, but I wanted to just give you a quick background of what these things, what they mean. Town halls for us are an informal meeting where the city council member is in attendance, where it is informal, where we talk about topics that are driven by citizens as well as by the city council member. We're going to host them three times a year. We're skipping the holiday timeframe just because we know people probably won't participate during that time. So three times a year, almost quarterly, and we're going to hold them in the neighborhood. So some of the things that we identified that were successful in the current NABS, we've applied to the town halls, but we think we improved them by adding the informal structure and by publicizing them to, to let people know more about it, we hope that we'll be more successful. So at the moment, I think there are 81 NAB meetings a year. Is that right? 81 NAB meetings a year. And this will be 18 meetings a year. So we think that quantity, quality versus quantity is, is going to help us. The next hot topic meeting that I alluded to, the hot topic meeting is another one of our, in our toolbox, one of our, our ideas for how we can continue to get additional feedback. The attendees, and I discussed the, like, the baseball idea and, and I believe that we'll have additional opportunities that will help you get more outreach and more perspectives to help you make your decisions. The grassroots idea is that each council member would be able to identify their individual way that they want to communicate with their citizenship. So for one city council person, it might be regular cups of coffee where you can meet at the coffee, neighborhood coffee shop. Another, it's been HOAs. And another one has been attending parent teacher association meetings for outreach. So this is more of a grassroots approach for citizen engagement that is individually tailored to the type of council member desire. They're directing how we would implement it. The next one that we're excited about is our, what we're calling, we've branded as the Think Reno Tool, and that is our online engagement. And we think that we just tapped the beginning of it. Right now, if we put a topic up there, for instance, road diets, we, we could get feedback from, from a variety of citizens from home after 6 o'clock or during the day. And, and basically what the tool does is it summarizes, it allows people to vote up or vote down, it provides you a nice report as well as all of the actual excerpts from people that, that gave comments. So we think this tool is the future. I think it's something that we haven't had before and that provides us an opportunity to put up projects or decisions that you're having to make, that you want more feedback. This is another, for instance, we've been doing it in tandem. If you can't make the meeting, the hot topic meeting, you can give your feedback through the tool. Now you have two ways to give feedback for the same topic. And then we consolidate the remarks and give you a well-thought-out summarized report. So this online tool is new for us. We're still identifying how it is, how we're implementing it and how we respond to, because I think that, that the ideas are, the potential for growth is unlimited. So I think there's still a lot we can do with it beyond just general ideas. I think that it can be used for a development feedback tool down the road in a much more robust, in a much more robust manner. This is an example of what it looks like. This is a broad question. How, how can you help improve your city? And then you get to start posting your ideas and then once your idea is posted, it allows citizens to vote it up or down and you can provide comments. It's sort of a forum-based tool, but again, the, it provides us the opportunity for reports and for summarizing and, and another way for people to engage. And at this point in time, the last part that we talked about NABS being successful is that it was a great venue for people to give feedback on development projects. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Fred, who's going to talk about the community development partnership aspect of the community engagement program. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Fred Turner, Community Development Director. Actually, I like graphs, so we'll just go to this. Madam Chair, Planning Commissioners and to the AICP planners out in the audience, as we all know, as planners, we try to engage the citizen in, or the resident in the most effective manner as possible. Under our development code, we have requirements. We prescribe how to do that with newspaper publications, postcard mailers, onsite posting, advisory board noticing, and what you have before you is, is the requirements. And it's, it's almost like a cookbook and a recipe. It's prescribed. This is exactly what you have to do. And what we're doing with this new process is that we're looking at it as, is it as efficient and effective as it can be? Because we've been to the NABS, both on the private side and the public side, and, and sometimes you have a lot of people coming out and sometimes it's a checkbox. And sometimes we have a lot of people show up and sometimes we don't. But we go to the NABS and it's a checkbox for us that we attended the NABS because the Planning Commissioners, if you ask, did you go to the NAB? Typically, the developer may say, yes, we did go and the two issues were height of the building and parking issues. And this is how we're going to address it. And, and that has worked and we see this new process as continuing to work like that. But, you know, looking at it from a more robust perspective of how we can actually get more input from our citizens. So again, as, as we mentioned, we do have administrative procedures. The administrator may provide additional public notice. Our development review memorandums, that's actually placed online, so someone could go online to see what projects are coming in. And that's on our website. We also send emails out to the current NAB members. And as always, someone could come in to see Claudia anytime, just by appointment, and see Claudia or Vern and talk about these projects. And here's just an example of development review memorandums that come out. This is for Popeyes special use permit. And it gives some general information about the project. If someone's really interested about when it's going to open or what the dynamics of this project is, they, they can call the planner, they can email the planner, they can look online at the development application. And that's something else people that may be, may not know is that the actual application that comes through is actually online. So you can actually see the Flying Goat project or the Prim Gaming. If you're interested in that, it's online. And if you have any questions regarding it, you can call the planner. So the additional development, public outreach aspects is basically with our hot, I want to focus on the hot topic meetings because we did hear from some people, specifically from the NAB, how do I, how do I engage the process? You know, I do the online tool, I call Claudia up, I email Vern, I've talked to maybe some of my planning commissioners, but how can I have more public input into this? Well, this is the meeting right here, is to have public input. The Planning Commission, as prescribed in our NRS and in our development code, you hear the development applications. And so you have the public that comes out and they talk about what their issues are. And regarding hot topic meetings, what we would ask the planning commissioners is that if you have, and I don't want to throw out, I'll throw out a number, but it doesn't have to be this number. If you have 20 people that come up and they all have the same traffic issue, you know, the traffic, 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 and there doesn't seem to be a resolution, we would recommend that the planning commission advise the applicant to, you know, go back and meet with the community. It sounds like there's an issue with traffic. Go out and meet with them. Claudia and Bill Gall, maybe go out with them to talk about what those traffic issues are in a separate meeting and then come back to the planning commission. Or another option is to have a hot topic meeting. For instance, let me throw out a number, say 50 people or 100 people come up and they have some specific issues regarding something. Let's say it's the land use. Then at that point, that may be an opportunity for, for the chair and the commission to advise that this may be ripe for a hot topic meeting and we'll have it here in chambers and we'll notice everyone that's here and we'll, we'll figure out what other noticing needs to occur to actually have that hot topic meeting here in the chambers where we can keep it a little bit more informal. We don't, you know, sometimes we get up here and some people are saying, well, that project doesn't pencil out from a monetary standpoint. And then usually the city attorney or someone on the planning commission says, I'm sorry, but that's not a finding we can consider. In a hot topic meeting, we can talk about those, those items that, that are relevant and, and go through that process. So there's a little bit more flexibility with that. And so again, what we're going to do with the hot topic meetings is that when the projects come here, the planning commission, we're going to ask you to make that determination if it can't be resolved here in a normal amount of time, that you ask the applicant to have a separate meeting or that a hot topic meeting occur here. And that may be few and far between, but that is an option that's open to the planning commissioners. And we will advise you, we will recommend that this sounds like this could be a special meeting offsite or that this should be a hot topic meeting. What we don't want to get into is that if, you know, it's an issue that can be resolved here, it should be resolved here. So we would like you to take that responsibility to try to work it out here at the planning commission. But if it's something that's a bigger issue, there's a lot of people, it looks like you're going to be here for 12 hours, let's have a hot topic meeting. And at that point, Deanna and I are open for any questions that commissioners may have.
Thank you. That was really helpful. Is there anybody, anybody have a question, comment?
Commissioner Reno for the record. So these town hall meetings and hot topics, open meeting laws won't apply? How does that work? I think you're trying to get away from that more informal, right?
We're, we're not going to operate. We'll have to post under open meeting law just in case all the council members were in wanting to attend, but we're not going to. Is that right? We're not going to.
It will be posted for the open meeting law. The format will be open and flexible. For instance, here, you have three minutes, people come up, they have three minutes and I would hope that the, the planning commissioners would consider the items that are relevant to, to the findings. In a hot topic meeting, it's, it's open more. It's, again, if someone's going to ask, we had a hot topic meeting for the gaslight project and a lot of the questions that were answered or that were asked were outside the scope of what the planning commission would typically see. But it's information that was relevant and important to the neighborhood and we want to focus in on more in those meetings, what's relevant and important to the neighbors, not so much what's applicable to the findings. So it was just more flexibility associated with it. And those are for the hot topic meetings.
And who leads the meetings? Is it the planning department or the council person for that area? Who leads them?
Yeah, we do it in conjunction. If it's development-related, we would work very closely with Claudia and staff. And then our liaisons, Lisa Mann and Barbara DiCiano, also help facilitate. And we do, we try to set up the framework, like, you know, here, here are the rules of protocol and here's, here's the end goal is to, is to walk away with some significant, you know, input from all of you and, and also use it as an education opportunity to give people input about specifics, what the development really looks like or the baseball agreement or whatever the topic would be. It's an education opportunity as well.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair. Deanna, one of the things that we used to do with the NAB, I came up through the NAB ranks, was we used the NAB as a, as a training tool for the general public who's not familiar with the process to be more to, to the point when there were issues on projects that were, were going to planning commission, protocol here in chambers. And if there's 100 people that have the same complaint, that it would be, you know, they, the general public would be taught or it would be explained to them how to use all of our time wisely so that we're not here for three minutes for each one of them listening to the same thing 100 times over. Does that process still take place under hot topics?
I would have to say no. I don't think we're addressing the learning process aspect. So I would, I would have to take that as potentially something that we consider as we look at the framework that we proposed here.
Okay, I'm.
If I can jump in on that really quick, I'm not sure if we're still doing it, but the RCI program did that as well, the Reno Citizens Institute. That was a big element of that.
Right, but how many people attended RCI last session? And we have how many citizens in the?
Forty.
I thought it was 30.
We, we can have more than that easily in this chamber for a, a project in a neighborhood and maybe nobody from that neighborhood was aware of it. It's just something that helps the process move smoothly here and I would hate to see that dropped because it, it was a very good tool that not just the ward that I was in, but visiting other NABS, several other NAB chairs I see here this evening used the same tool and the same time to help it go smoother in, in PC meeting. The other question I had for you was.
I just want to follow up on that one step further. I, I think that's a very valid point that we should talk about because you yourself and Oscar Delgado also was a, a NAB leader. And so how are we fostering that leadership is probably something we should be addressing as well. Because we want to continue to, to motivate and cultivate leaders like yourselves that are, are helping, helping the city improve and be better. So I take your comment to heart.
Okay. One of the other things that, that we did, and it was advised through legal, and maybe this is a question for Rob, but I'll start with you on it. And Barbara's going to smirk when she hears me say this, but typically, when planning commissioners would go back and sit in on a NAB meeting, they would be asked not to sit in during the project discussions because they would have, there could be an, an influence in there of, I don't want to use the word bias, but, you know, we're supposed to hear the project for the first time when it comes before us here in planning commission. So are we, am I hearing you right that if, in a hot topics meeting, you want planning commissioners to sit in in those meetings? And if, whoever wants to answer that, go ahead.
Fred Turner, Community Development Director. The short answer is no.
Thank you. We can understand no. I don't need a reason.
But, but the caveat is that it's, it's open and anyone from the planning commission can't attend.
Okay.
But as.
I would rather not refuse myself.
I would recommend, I would recommend.
I would rather be a planning commissioner.
I would recommend.
I would rather not refuse myself.
I would recommend that you don't.
So, okay.
But you're more than welcome to attend.
Thanks, Fred. Last question I have, are CPG funds going away then? Because I did not hear?
Yes, they have been cut from the budget for this fiscal year. I can't say what will happen in the future, right.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Locke, can we state what CPG is for the record, as well as? Community?
It was?
Okay.
Okay. Community Pride Grant.
Okay.
Reno, or?
And Reno Citizens Institute is RCI.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Stapleton. I have a comment, and I want to follow on what Commissioner Wieske said. I thought his comments were really good. I was also one who was on the NAB, and I was also chair of my NAB at one point, and I'm probably not the only one, also NAB members, yeah. So most of us actually were on the NAB, and I do think that that's a very, was a very valuable function that the NABs played, training, you know, at least for a couple of years of how to run a meeting, you know, just procedures in meetings, as well as familiarity with development projects, because the stuff we review up here is complicated for someone who just comes on and doesn't have any background in development or planning. And so those years on the NAB for folks that do that before they come on planning commission can be very valuable. So I think that's really important, and I attended RCI years ago, and, you know, it was great, but it was just a scratch on the surface, whereas my years on the NAB reviewing development projects in that capacity really helped me to learn about the elements of a development application and what we need to be looking at. So I think that's important. And then I'll also say, and maybe there's, you know, this is just sort of food for thought in sharing what I felt was valuable about the NABs, both as a NAB member and as a planning commissioner. So the other thing is that the comments that we get from NAB members on each of the development applications that we review, I think are valuable, and I'm not the only one who I think at one time or another, each one of the commissioners will refer to, well, what were the NAB comments, and refer back to those comments. And I think that's true for all of us, and I think that that serves a valuable role. And as opposed to just one open meeting or comments online, at the NAB, you're actually getting a presentation from the developer, so you're getting a more thorough way to access and get input from citizens. And so I do think that that's important. And lastly, I'll just say that, well, I'll just, I think it's, I think that that input is important, and I think that that engagement is important. And even if you have only, say, you're eight, most NABs have eight, nine folks on them, I think that if you have a development project and you bring it to the NAB and say one person's in the audience, you've still got eight, you know, key neighborhood stakeholders reviewing that process, and that's really important. Whereas you might not even get all of those folks to show up to a hot topic or, you know, one of the other meeting formats that you're talking about. So even without, you know, a big showing, you know, those people on the board, those are real quality input, and usually it's really thoughtful, and they're the ones that know the issues in their neighborhood, which is why they're in that position. So those are, for me, the valuable aspects of having that structure, and hopefully there's a way to replicate those if the NAB structure is going to be changed and turned into this new process.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Deanna.
Thank you all.
Okay. I think that was a useful conversation. Moving on to item number seven, public hearings. Before we start in, please remember, if you wish to speak, you need to fill out a request to speak form with the secretary, and you'll have three minutes to speak at that time. And before we begin with action item number one, it's been brought to our attention that the Evans Ranch project is to be continued to the October 2nd meeting, so we can hear that item first. Oh, okay. And so I do? Okay, so at this time, we'll open public comment. I believe we have an Ed Hawkins who wish to speak.
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Tom Gallagher. I'm with Summit Engineering Corporation, representing the owners of Evans Ranch. We have had some last-minute items come up that we want to be able to address prior to you holding a formal public hearing on the item, a couple with fire and some with access. So we would like to respectfully request a continuance until October 2nd. If you have any questions, one of the owners is here with me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak? Let's see. Okay, oh, I see. Would Ed Hawkins like to speak now or in October? October, okay. At this time, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Commissioner Wieske for the record. In the case of LDC 10-00030, Evans Ranch PUD amendment, I make a motion that we continue this to our October meeting.
October 2nd?
October 2nd, 2013.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion. Commissioner Stapleton.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Looks like we have six in favor and zero opposed. Thank you. Moving on, the second action item is LDC 14-00002, Moana Mini Storage Expansion. Will the applicant or applicant's representative please step forward?
Good evening. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group, on behalf of the applicant. We're asking for a special use permit to expand an existing storage business that's been in place for several decades. I'm inclined to believe that the staff report is fairly self-explanatory, and I know we have an agenda still in front of us, so I'll do my best to keep this very brief, and I'll be happy to elaborate later if there are questions. Just so you know, you know, anytime there are residences nearby, we take that seriously. I did anticipate that some of the nearby residents, some of the nearby residents would not be getting a notice as they aren't owners of some of those properties. So Rubicon staff went to that neighborhood and hand-delivered flyers and had some discussion with neighboring property owners, and I received no calls or contact from anybody opposed, and the two property owners that I spoke to directly were supportive of some investment in the neighborhood. So I think their attitude says a lot about what we're bringing there. Overall, we agree with the staff report, and I can elaborate as needed. Thanks.
Thank you. Vern?
Good evening. Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a minor expansion to an existing mini-storage facility. Staff believes that all the findings can be made to approve the special use permit. Issues such as architecture, lighting, days and hours of operation, those sorts of issues are addressed in the staff report, either by the application or recommended conditions. I did receive one phone call from a neighboring property owner. She just was interested in what the project was, was concerned about architecture and lighting, the same sorts of things that we were concerned about, and I explained to her what was being done about them, and that was, she seemed to be satisfied with that. And I did not receive any other correspondence. Staff is recommending approval, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. First, if we can have disclosures, we'll start with Commissioner Wusley.
I do not have any disclosures.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site.
Okay.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site.
Commissioner Wieske, I visited the site and had a phone conversation with the applicant's representative.
Thank you. Commissioner Locke, I visited the site as well.
Commissioner Stapleton, I too visited the site, but I have no other disclosures.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? If you want to speak, you need to fill out a request to speak form. Do we have any? No. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or comments, I mean, questions. Questions. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Stapleton? Yeah, I have a question for the applicant. In the staff report, it talks about the setback of the expansion on Smith Street matching the adjacent residential setbacks. I know in the staff report, it suggested that the setback should be similar. Maybe I read that wrong, and maybe Vern can follow up. It's on page three, under Urban Environmental Design. How far, what will be the difference in the setback from the, from that building on Smith Street to the, compared to the adjacent residential property?
It's only about five feet.
Difference?
Yes, we're further, we're closer to Smith Street, so we project a little further out than the apartment buildings. As a general point, the MU District does encourage a variety of building frontages and facades, and not a blank, uniform streetscape.
So what's the setback from the sidewalk?
The sidewalk detours onto our, let me, I can put this up. Is that going to work? If I line it up here, it's a little bit off. Okay. You can see the sidewalk deviates slightly onto our site to place the landscaping closer to the street. It gives a little bit of variation to the street frontage.
So it increases the planning strip, or the, so there's a planning strip in between the sidewalk and the street?
Yes, yes. Pushes the sidewalk a little closer to our building.
The sidewalk comes in.
Yeah.
How many feet in from the, does the sidewalk come in from the adjacent properties?
It comes in, there's a five-foot planning strip, then the sidewalk, then another five feet to our site, to our building.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it comes in, the sidewalk comes in about five feet also?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Commissioner Wieske for the record. Derek?
Sure.
Would you put the elevations up? You've got a sheet with elevations on it.
Yeah, I do. And in fact, this is a slightly revised elevation. In the staff report, you'll notice that Vern wasn't entirely satisfied with the elevation view, and I have to say, I'm somewhat sympathetic to that. I think Vern did a good job of working his way through some code that doesn't provide strict standards, it provides more sort of goals. So there wasn't a strict standard for us to design to. I feel like this exhibit would meet the needs of the applicant, and I believe it meets Vern's needs, but I'd let him answer that. But based on input he's given, I think this achieves that.
My question is, because of the, this is a neighborhood near where I live, and I've watched the graffiti grow in the area from time to time. What are the finished products of the outside wall facing Smith Street? And would you show Smith on your elevation there? That is Smith, correct? That would be the east elevation?
Yes.
Okay.
This, yeah, yeah, that's the east.
Okay, what is the material?
In this view, the lowest level at ground level is brick wainscoting, then a articulated metal panel, and then wood fencing at the extremities, and then a mansard roofline addition.
Okay. The metal panels, are those going to be a type of metal panel and/or color that can be easily matched? Unfortunately, for your owner, I'm afraid it's going to get tagged occasionally.
Yeah.
Is it going to be something that'll be easily touched up, and it won't look like patchwork quilt after a couple of weekends?
Yeah. You were nice enough to tip me off that this was an issue, and honestly, I hadn't thought about that. I appreciated that input. I checked with our engineer and architect, and he indicated that this can be treated with anti-graffiti coating. You can't stop somebody from applying graffiti, but you can make it easily, more easily removable. So yes.
More easily removable, and then when the touch-up comes along, at that point, the colors can be matched fairly easily?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be sort of a standard residential palette.
Compliments to you and your design team for, owner for doing that, because that's important in this neighborhood to?
I agree.
Show that we control it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any more questions? Okay, we can bring it back for discussion and possible motion. Yes?
Commissioner Wieske, if there's no further conversation, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Please do.
In the case of LDC 14-00002, Moana Mini Storage Expansion, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to the conditions. And I can make all of the conditions, I think these conditions, with articulation and location, sidewalk, et cetera, are an improvement to the neighborhood.
Claudia Hansen, Plan Engineer and Manager. I believe you mean you can make the findings?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, thank you.
That's what I was just discussing, that I could make the findings.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wieske. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll second the motion, and I can make the findings, especially finding E. In terms of being appropriate, in terms of scale, intensity, and layout with the site, my concern about the setback, I think, is alleviated with the description that the applicant gave of the landscaping in front and the sidewalk.
Thank you, Commissioner Stapleton. Now that we have a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Let the record show, we have six in favor and none opposed. Okay. The next action item on public hearings is something really good. LDC 14-00004, Flying Goat Storage. At this time, can we have the applicant or the applicant's representative?
Good evening, Commissioners John Krompotic with KLS Planning here, on behalf of the applicant, my client, John DiMaio.
Okay.
I was trying to get a PowerPoint. There's a few things I'd like to share graphically with you, even though we're in support of the staff report as written, except all the conditions, I do have one simple condition amendment that we've negotiated with a neighbor, but there's some things graphically I'd like to share, and we're having trouble firing up the PowerPoint. So I think she asked for, Louisa asked for a recess, is that right?
Okay. At this time, at this time, we're going to move right on. Okay, we're going to move on?
To the next case?
To the, we're going to move on, give you some time, if that's all right?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, this will be a fast one.
I was talking like a 60-second recess.
Okay. Let's see, we're going to skip over to action item number five under public hearings, LDC 14-000, lots of zeros, six, Mayberry and Hunter Lake Zone Change. Can I have the applicant or the applicant's representative at this time, or staff, or whoever? Can I have the applicant or the applicant's representative at this time, or staff, or whoever? Talk to us.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a council-initiated zoning map amendment from MF 14 to public facility on a 1.17 acre parcel, and from SF 15 to public facility on a 1.25 acre parcel. I'll show you the location here. The purpose of this zoning map amendment is to make the land use and master plan and zoning on the site, on the parcels consistent with each other. This is a fire station site, and this is a energy substations parcel. They've been zoned residentially for a number of years. They've obviously been used for public facility-type uses. This is more of a housekeeping item. Staff can make all the findings required to support the zoning map amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. We did receive eight contacts, seven phone calls, and one email, and they were just informational questions with no concerns. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Okay. Uh, let's see, do I need to call for disclosures? Not really. Okay. Okay, as far as, let's see, do I have any disclosures on this item? Commissioner Wisely?
I'm familiar with the area, but I have no disclosures.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site.
Commissioner Wieski, I visited the site.
Commissioner Locke, I visited the site.
Commissioner Stapleton visited the site. We do have to disclose that if we visited the site? Okay, thank you, I wasn't sure. Thank you. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission. Do we have any questions?
Commissioner Locke, Commissioner Reno, I do.
Great.
Vern, quick question. Is there a lot of housekeeping, I mean, is there a lot of this going on in the city? Where the old zoning, where we need to switch it to public facility, or likewise? And you guys initiated it, but is it council that initiates it? Do they come to you and say, please fix this problem, or do you guys just go and fix the problem?
The council and the Planning Commission and the property owners are the people that can initiate zone changes. And in this case, because this was, I mean, this was more, it was brought to the surface, so it was acted upon. I'm sure there are a number of situations like this throughout the city. We, probably about 10, 12 years ago, we went through a zoning and master plan consistency project, and even after doing that, there were still a number of parcels that were not, you know, they weren't consistent with each other. The zoning and master plan, or even the use. It's probably more common with schools and public facility-type uses. And what that does is, if someone wants to do a project next to them in their zone residential, they have to get a special use permit, even though there's probably really no impact on them. So in this particular instance, that would remedy that for an adjacent property owner, but I don't have the numbers on how many of these that we have, but I do know there are some out there.
So did an adjacent property owner start a special use permit, and then this kind of came to the attention of the council, and then they decided to move forward and fix the issue? Is that kind of how this came up?
I do know that there was a special use permit in on this piece here, and...
Sorry, which piece is that? To the east or west, or?
This, to the north and east of the parcels there, so...
We can't see what you see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't see what you see.
On your, there we go. I don't know why they didn't, I didn't know they didn't have that up. The whole... This whole thing?
There you go.
Janitor, planner. So this particular property here, they're in for an expansion, a commercial project, office, or a barber salon, something like that. Because these two properties are zone residential, they needed a special use permit. And it's, in this particular instance, it's sort of unnecessary because of what the actual use of those properties are. It would really have no impact on them, so... I did not do this project, so I don't have those specific details, but I do know that that project was in, and it got to the point where the council initiated, you know, told staff to initiate the zone change, and that's why we're here before this evening.
So just to make clear to the staff, you guys don't actually initiate this, or bring it to the attention of the council unless told to do something about parcels?
Well, what we would do is, we could tell the property owner, this is an option you can pursue. If you want to talk to your council person about that, that's something that you can do. We do not generally, you know, on specific cases like that, go to the council and request to do that. It usually comes with the council when we, we might bring up something, saying there's an overall problem with this, and here's a number of them, do you want to direct us to clean this up?
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, any more questions before Vern sits down? Okay, there are no more questions, do we have a discussion or a motion?
Commissioner Reno, I can make a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Reno, do we have a second?
Wait, I'm sorry, I'll make the motion if there's no discussion.
Oh, right, the motion. Go ahead.
In the case of LDC 140006, Mayberry-Hunter Lake Zone Change, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that the city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance. And particularly, I can make findings, I can make all the findings, but I can also make finding I, J, and M.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Commissioner Wisely? I'll go ahead and make a second, I can make the findings as well, and agree with J and M findings.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Let the record show, there are six in favor, none opposed. Okay. Hopefully, we'll be moving on, we're back to, are you guys ready?
Ladies, thank you both anyway for your efforts. We're going to pass on the PowerPoint, I've got a hard copy. Let me touch on a quick bookkeeping issue. You saw the supplement memo from Vern, this is Vern and I discussing this yesterday as a result of a neighbor who brought a concern to the table. Mr. Robert Rabkin, who is in the audience, I believe he's going to testify as well. We wanted to, as you guys know, and I think Derek mentioned it too, we're always working with neighbors and people in the community. He's an adjacent property owner, going to build a very nice house adjacent to the site. So we tried to add those conditions in terms of fencing and additional landscape to address his issue. So if I could point your attention to condition 14, where it says 10-foot to 10, 10-foot tall evergreen trees, we just suggested doing 15 trees. That would be the only change, so it'd go from 10 to 15.
I'm not seeing where you are.
Okay, in the supplemental memo that Vern, did you hand the memo out to them?
Oh, okay.
Did they get that? I think they did. This was dated today, there's a memo with condition 13 and 14. And in condition 14, what we did is, we had deciduous trees on the south property line. We want a little more intensive screening and buffering, so we added, we swapped them out. We had 10, 10-foot tall evergreens, and that's going to go to 15 trees. And I'll show you that. So, wow. So this area here is the, is the area adjacent to Mr. Rabkin's property. Those are now 10-foot tall, 10-foot tall evergreen trees. At time of planning, we went to 15. The flipping through the PowerPoint, I think, is just not going to work, so... What I think I'm going to do is, I mentioned earlier that we will accept the conditions. It has been a very, I wanted to walk through it because we spent an awful lot of time in design of this thing. And when you put this kind of design effort, particularly on the architecture and on the landscape and the screening, for what is oftentimes not thought of as a nice use, and architecturally with personal storage, we felt pretty good about it, but I will just leave it at that. Accept the conditions with the one change, and be here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we can hear from staff. Thank you, Vern.
Vern Close, Senior Planner, I know I sent you guys the memo. I apologize for not bringing a hard copy, if you didn't have one. As you know, this is a request for a mini-storage facility. It's located in the West Street, West Forest Street Transitoria Development Zone. It's in the Gateway Commercial Section.
Vern, can I interrupt you? Will you just scoot it over like a smidge, so we can, there you go. Thank you, thanks.
And this type of use requires a special use permit. It's also a special use permit for hillside development. With regard to the hillside development, the applicant has basically stayed off the slopes that are, any slopes that are greater than 30 percent. The open space requirement is exceeded by the proposal. And in fact, they've maintained an area of about three and a half acres of the site. And let me get that for you. This is the site plan, this is the open space area, and this contains the steepest slopes, and also contains around 150 large trees. They did have to remove, or they will have to remove some in this area, but they've maintained a lot of them, which helps to buffer the property from the residential lots that are on this side. And with that condition number 14 that Mr. Krompotic was discussing, I'll put this back here. This is the area where the trees would be added. They had deciduous trees there before. The condition number 14 suggested that they change those evergreen, and now it's been increased to 15 10-foot tall evergreens, which should provide a good buffer there. Also, to help buffer the site, and to clarify where the fencing would go, as part of the memo I sent to you, there was an exhibit, and unfortunately, the font on it was not very large. So what I did is, I just color-coded the areas. So the yellow fence is a solid wood fence in this area here. The red fencing here and here is six-foot tall chain link with two-way diagonal slats. And then the blue fencing is open chain link fencing, which is in an area where there's nothing that really needs to be screened. So the whole site would be fenced, but the screening fencing would be placed in the yellow and red areas. And the wood fencing would look like this. Basically like a residential perimeter fence for someone's lot. Those are the issues that were modified since the report was published. Staff can make all of the findings that are necessary to approve, to recommend approval. I did receive two calls, and one person came by the office. One of them was the gentleman that Mr. Krompotic mentioned with, he he owns, I believe he owns the lot that's on this portion of the site, or south of that portion of the site. The issues that were brought up were lighting. We have dark sky lighting techniques as a condition of approval. Access, they have to get approval from NDOT for their access improvements. This is a relatively low-traffic generating project, so traffic and access should not be an issue at this point. And those were the primary issues that were brought up by the neighbors. That concludes my presentation, be happy to answer any questions.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineer and Manager, could you please read the conditions from the memo, since the planning commissioner didn't get it? Thank you.
Condition number 13 is basically lays out where the fencing goes that I showed on this display. So how it reads is, prior to issuance of any building permit, the applicant should have plans approved to install six-foot tall solid view fencing along the north and south sides of the site as follows. A, north side, six-foot tall solid wood fencing extending to the west 200 feet from the west side of the main building, and six-foot tall chain link fencing with two-way diagonal slats extending to the west approximately 600 feet, 30 feet from the west side of the wood fence to the northwest corner of the outdoor storage area. So that would be, here's the main building, this is the wood fence, this is the 630 feet of of the slatted fencing. And then B is the south side, six-foot tall fencing, wood fencing extending to the west 125 feet from the west side of the main access gate, and six-foot tall chain link fencing with two-way diagonal slats extending to the west approximately 250 feet from the west side of the wood fence. The two-way diagonal slats required in the above chain link fence section shall be dark green or dark brown in color. The fencing discussed above shall be located as shown on the site plan attached to this memo. Said fencing shall be installed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And then condition number 14 relates to to the trees proposed in this area. These were originally proposed as deciduous. And the condition says, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant should have plans approved to convert the 10 deciduous trees shown on the south side landscape strip, which extends approximately 370 feet to the west of the main access gate to, as, and I will amend it, per the applicant, to 15 10-foot tall evergreen trees. Said trees shall be installed prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy. So that is the wording on those conditions, and be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we can have disclosures, and state your name for this project, Commissioner Wieski, disclosure?
I visited the site and received an email.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site and received an email.
Commissioner Stapleton, I received an email.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site and received an email.
Commissioner Wisely, I visited the site, as I was not as familiar with the site, as well as receiving an email with the amended conditions.
Commissioner Locke, I also visited the site and received...
Commissioner Locke, I also visited the site and received this email is the one I think, or this one, I believe is the only one I received. Okay, uh, I believe we do have a request-to-speak form, um, for public comment. Um, is there a Robert Rabkin?
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name's Robert Rabkin, and I have the property along the south border. That's, uh, the east half of the south border contiguous. It's, it's resident, all that property is residential. Um, I did have a chance to speak with, uh, Vern Claus and John Kropotic earlier this week, several occasions, and, um, they were, uh, quite helpful and responsive, and we, we just had a, a short meeting that, that, on Condition 14, uh, will have, uh, will be 15 trees instead of 10 trees to, to better screen the fence, uh, that's between my property and, and the subject property. Um, and with that, uh, I'm in, I'm in favor of the, of the project.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wishes to make a public comment? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Okay. Do we have any questions at this time? Commissioner Reno?
Yeah, quick question for Vern. So, reading the application here, uh, it talks about 36.1 percent of the frontage is, is building, and you're supposed to have 50 percent, correct? At least 50 percent?
Vern Claus, Senior Planner, that's the requirement in the TOD, unless you, you can request a special use permit to reduce that amount.
The question I have is, there's a facade or a fake, fake building at the edge, if I'm reading that right, like right at the end of the canopy cover? Um, I, I could have been wrong about that. But looking at the, the pictures, that's what I thought I, I saw there. Yeah, the RV east elevation? So does that not count for coverage?
No, because it's set back from the street. That...
Okay.
Basically, you're supposed to have your building right up at the front yard set back, and this one is, actually encroaches a little bit at the corner just because it's an existing building and it was built a long time ago. But this was the frontage that was counted for the 50 percent. This was not. But that, I mean, that with landscaping and the existing building, that's, and also based on the type of project that it is, we felt that it was appropriate in this case to reduce it because you still kind of had that frontage looking, you also had landscaping to kind of break up the building. So that, that was our, our reasoning and...
Could you put up the east elevation? Because I just have a quick question on that. The RV east elevation? Yeah, so you're seeing the canopy behind the facade, right? What kind of, is that a metal roof? What, I guess you're going to be able to see that from the road, correct? I mean, that's, that's elevation.
You'll be able to see the side of it, but basically you have this and landscaping and distance, and there'll just be the, kind of the silhouette of the edge of that building.
Okay. Another question. Yeah, what, well, what color is the roof there? Is there a color for that roof?
I'd have to defer to the applicant on that.
I assume it's a metal roof or canopy?
It's, it's a, I believe it is a metal roof, but, uh, it should be a non-reflective...
Okay.
Kind of dark color, and you can clarify that in a condition or if you would, if you wish.
I would, I would just request it to be a natural color that blends in and kind of makes it disappear, especially from the IAD corridor there. But, uh, then my next question, Vern, is, um, in here you say there is no sign package provided. Now, you know, it says here, "Signs for the project are limited by code. One maximum 35-foot-tall, 250-square-foot freestanding sign is allowed." And, um, I know it needs to complement the style of the building, but not to be cheeky here a little, but it's calling, it's called flying goat, uh, mini-storage. I mean, if it was meadow mini-storage or something, I don't know if I'd have much of an issue with that, but, I mean, this is coming into Reno. You may see a flying goat. I, I mean, I don't, I don't know because I haven't seen a sign package, so...
Well, well, again, that's about all we can really regulate is size. We can't regulate the content on the sign. Uh, that's First Amendment situation.
Sure. Uh, but I would just like to make sure that it complements the building and it doesn't have, you know, not different colors or so forth that it echoes with the building and the landscape.
Well, again, they're, they're required to do that by code, so when they come in with, with the signs, they need to show us how they've integrated the signs in with the project so that we don't have this kind of rustic building, and then we have something that does, does not go with that.
And the whole reason I bring this up is one of the findings that need to be made. Uh, new sign should be designed to minimize its impact on the view shed area utilizing dark sky light, lighting or other suitable alternatives. And so since we didn't get a sign package, that makes me wonder if we can make that finding. Uh, that, that's my only concern.
Again, at this point, we have guidance with code on what they have to do. If, if you are concerned about that, you can clarify it with a condition.
I don't know how you condition that exactly.
Reduce, reduce...
Commissioner, go ahead, Claudia.
They are required, as Vern said, by code to have it architecturally compatible. They are allowed to have what, the square footage is allowed by code, and as Vern mentioned, we are not allowed to regulate copies. So they can put a flying goat or a flying pig or whatever they want on their sign, and we cannot regulate that.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Locke, if I can just jump in. I think one of the things that maybe is concerning to someone reading this is, in that same paragraph on page four of the staff report here, it says, same paragraph, second sentence, "To minimize lighting impacts on this area, the project should be required to utilize dark sky technology." Like, they should be, I mean, that's the kind of language that I feel like gets us in trouble or has been a problem in the past. So maybe that's just something to think about, that it, the project is required?
Well, what, what...
Or can be?
What, the way we characterize that in a staff report is we're giving you guidance on what we think you should do, and then the condition says they have to.
Okay.
So it's...
Okay. And then I have a question, Vern, you can maybe answer it. On, on page three, just turn back, turning back one at the very, very bottom, the last sentence, this is just a wording question. It says, "Traffic and operational activity associated with the storage facility and residents will have a," flipped to page four, "located." And is there a word omission? I wasn't, is, is that on yours or is it just on mine?
It's, it's on mine.
Okay. What's the word?
What, what it should say is, "will have, um, a minimal impact on the area..." Because it's, oh, on the, on the adjacent residences to the south because they're located 150, 140 feet away and, or 140 feet above and 650 feet to the south.
Okay. So it just should say minimal impact?
Must have been when we edited this thing that a sentence got dropped.
Oh, just a whole sentence? Okay.
Yeah, I believe there's a whole sentence that's not there.
Okay. Okay, I was just, I was making sure that wasn't just mine. So, do you, am I the only one who has that missing? Okay.
Is it showing it on everybody's?
Okay. Sorry. Should have told you before. Um, but we get the point, so. Maybe if we could just add that in?
Yeah, we can, we can...
Okay. That's all. Any more questions?
Commissioner Reno, Vern, really quick. Um, there is a blue, uh, water tank up on the, the west side of the property, and there's an access road up to it. And from the grading, it doesn't look like that access road can be used. Um, I don't know, i- is that an abandoned water tank? What's, what's the deal with the water tank?
I believe that the water tank is, is operational, that maybe the applicant has more specific information on that, but they could, they could, um, access, is that showing up? This is the water tank right here, and currently the road comes up in this direction right here.
Well, if you have a grading plan, there is a grading plan. That's why I said I couldn't, I couldn't figure out how they do it.
Do you guys have something on that?
I actually see the great road, the road graded in here. See that? Right to the side.
This is the, uh, total, the, uh, slope cells, and here's, this is the developed portion of the site. This would be the outdoor storage, and here's an existing road, still graded right in to the tank.
Right.
So, so that would not be affected, and they could, they could come in from this area, because this area here is where the, the, this shows it better.
I think if you put up the grading plan, you'll see what I'm talking about. Do you have that? It's right on the, the corner of the, the grading there, the kind of the... You see how it gets really steep right there where they're cutting? Locke, can you turn around?
Well, again, they could come in from this area here, because this, this is a road here, and they can come in from this area here. Um, and again, this, this doesn't even really show that road graded in at all.
If you can move it up a little? Yeah, right there, right at the tip of it, right on the corner is where you can see the road because of the, the actual contours. You can see it, it ends up being on the tip of the pad that's being cut over on your right. Yeah, right there. So that's where the road comes in, and so I don't see how they get access to it. I'm just saying that it probably should be addressed, access for that road if it's being utilized. So...
Understood. I mean, the applicant's engineers...
Yeah, maybe John can explain.
We've dealt with this in the grading plan. We're aware of the road...
Okay.
...relationship to the site. It's, it's, uh, discussed amongst the team and with our civil engineer, so appreciate the comment, though.
Thanks.
Madam Chairman, I have a question for the applicant, Commissioner Wieske. John, just for clarification purposes, your entrance drive off of, off of the roadway...
Yeah.
Is that sufficient in depth for staging of a semi-truck and trailer?
Yeah, it is. We went through all of it.
So it's off the road?
We went all through that. We actually brought in a couple of, uh, experts in, you know, the turning radiuses of, uh, these very long wheelbase units that you have here, because this is basically boat and RV storage. I forget the name of the company. Kiwi's one of them. And they know how to jockey rigs through a site like this. So we had that criteria with our civil engineer and, uh, and dealt with it accordingly. Like our drive aisle on the one side is 60 foot wide because of how much...
Okay, but I'm talking about where it comes in off of the frontage road?
Yeah.
So a semi can pull in and be completely off the frontage road while it's waiting for a gate to be opened or while it's waiting to find out where it's going?
Yes.
There won't be queuing out on the frontage road that is the approach to the, to the freeway?
Uh, that's correct, because we have, this is a loading zone right in here.
Okay.
And that is about 80 feet deep.
Thank you.
Can I make one correction here? We have the wrong 10 circled, if I was kind of chuckling to myself, but this 10 is, can you, uh... So we're talking about 15 deciduous trees, not 15-foot in height, so this should be 15, and this is 10.
Yeah, that would be to convert the 10 deciduous trees to 10, 10-foot to 15, 10-foot tall. So that's, that would be a, this, that would convert the 10 deciduous trees to 15, 10-foot tall.
Vern has it right. As long as we know we're talking about 15 trees instead of 10, so we're good. Anything else? Any TOD kind of stuff? I thought this was kind of interesting out in Verde that we have TOD and, uh, we're making it work, so, uh...
Commissioner Stapleton? Go ahead.
I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Yeah.
I'll save it for when we're ready to go in the comments.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Looks like there's no questions, so we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Okay. So I just, I, I wanted to follow up on what the applicant said. I appreciate that. Um, I, I think that, that, I appreciate the, um, detail in design and some of the architectural details that were put into this project, especially for a use that doesn't usually get that type of attention, and so I appreciate that and, um, apologize, uh, on behalf of my colleagues for the technical difficulties because it sounds like you guys were prepared, so, um, my, uh, all of my questions have been answered, and, uh, I can support the project.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion if there's no other questions or comments.
Sorry, I have a quick comment. I just would like to include, uh, maybe in your motion, if you could include that, uh, that they need to have a colored roof or something to blend into the surrounding areas. That's my comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Can you speak up a little bit louder, please?
Uh, I just want the roof to be blended into the area, so colored roof, uh, to blend it in so it's not so noticeable as a condition.
I believe we should probably ask the applicant if that is okay? Or if they agree to that?
Uh, we, we would agree to it, um, but I think the color is what you're asking for, a green on that metal roof, and then this one's more rust here. So, um, hopefully that, as presented, you know, that's record, that is condition, but in color, if you want the words, we would agree to it as well.
So no, I'm worried about the canopy, really, the roof canopy.
Okay.
Well, it looks like it's silver. I would like it green, maybe matching if, if so. Thanks.
Okay, in case number LDC 14-00004, Flying Goat Storage, based upon compliance with the AppCo findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject conditions with the addition of Condition 13 and 14, and as well as, uh, changing 10 trees to 15 trees, and that is the deciduous trees. Um, also with the addition that the canopy will be like colors with the main structure, uh, it sounds like it's the green, greens and browns and rust. And I can agree with findings, especially findings A, E, and F.
We have a motion by Commissioner Woosley. Now, do I have a second?
Commissioner Stapleton, I can second the motion. I can make the findings, uh, in particular Findings A and E, as well as all the findings for the Hillside Development SUP.
We have a second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Let the record show, six in favor, none opposed. Good luck with your project. Moving on to action item number LDC 14-00005, Prim Gaming. Will the applicant, please step forward?
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Angela Fuess with CFA, representing Whitney Peak. The request before each night is a special use permit to resume non-conforming gaming use. Back in June of 1955, the Reno City Council approved this particular site for the... Back in June of 1955, the Reno City Council approved this particular site for the Club Primadonna Casino. The gaming use has been in operation since that time. It was actually closed down in 2011 and has been vacant since that time. The project's located in downtown Reno. It's part of the Downtown Reno Regional Center Plan. It's mixed use, and within that center plan, it's part of the Entertainment District. This is an area where the city has identified as being appropriate for gaming and entertainment type uses. Within that regional center plan, and within the zoning code, there are a number of requirements for new gaming uses. Some of those include hotel rooms. Code requires you have to have 201 hotel rooms. Because we were approved back in 1955 without hotel rooms, that condition does not apply. Another requirement is a minimum lot size of one acre. Again, we're not doing an expansion, we're using the existing building. So our lot size is .18 acres, so that also does not apply. Another requirement is a minimum ratio of public space to gaming space. Back when this was an operating casino, there was about 8,000 square feet of floor area that was used for gaming. We're going to reduce that square footage down to closer to 4,600. So we are actually coming closer into conformance with the code by having more public space versus gaming space ratio. In terms of the public space, that will be used for restrooms, office space, storage space, bar, tables, seating areas. Can we zoom out? Other way. Keep going. So this is kind of a timeline of how the facade has changed. Back in the 1970s, it was called the Primadonna. And it's, for those of you that have been in Reno for a long time, you may remember the dancing ballerinas. Back in 2012, the facade was pretty bare. It was vacant at this time. And in 2013, about six months ago, they did do some changes to upgrade the look of the facade. With this application, we are not proposing any additional changes to the facade. There will be tenant improvements done on the inside. And this really is kind of the first step as part of a phasing project for redevelopment of the Calm Row Corner. There are plans for the future, again, not connected to this application, but just so you're aware, for future redevelopment of this area. So as, as the area is redeveloped, if there's a theme evolved, there could be changes to the facade. But again, because the facade was upgraded in the last six months, with this special use permit, there are no proposed changes. We do have one request for a change in the conditions. And this is condition number five related to the parking. City staff has asked that we have a long-term lease, and it must be at least five years to have parking for our eight parking spaces. We are asking to modify this condition to take out the terms "long-term lease" and at least five years. So we're still moving forward with the requirement that we have to provide documentation, that we have at least eight parking spaces located somewhere within 1,000 feet of the operation. And at such time as that lease is terminated, the city will have to be notified and a new selection, well, a new site will have to be selected to show where we have those eight parking spaces. Other than that, we are in agreement with the conditions, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Angela. Staff?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. This Fuess gave a pretty good overview of the existing situation and the non-conforming issues. The downtown Regional Center Entertainment District is probably the most suitable place to put a casino-type use. Obviously, this, this project never had hotel rooms. They are coming closer into conformance with their gaming to public space ratio. They were essentially all gaming space. Now they're about 60% gaming space. So looking at all those issues, staff believes that it's, it's an appropriate re-establishment of a gaming use at this location. With regard to condition number five, we did have a, staff did have a chance to review the revisions, and we're in agreement with them. Our main intent was to get the eight spaces. And a lot of the wording and the location and stuff basically came from their application. But we see the need to provide flexibility as long as the actual number of spaces is provided. So we're in agreement with the modified condition number five as proposed by the applicant. I did receive one email, which I forwarded to you, and in this case, I actually brought the, gave you all a copy of it too, so. And it was, some folks that live in the Montage on Sierra Street, and they were concerned about noise. And it was mainly related to existing downtown entertainment sorts of establishments. This particular project faces on Virginia Street. There's an alley, and then another row of buildings on the, on the east side of Sierra. And the access into this building is from Virginia Street. So I would not believe that there would be any noise issues generated from this particular project on the Montage a block away. And I did also receive a phone call from a casino owner, just wondering what was going on. They had no concerns, they just were informational questions. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's bring it back for disclosures. Start on this side.
Commissioner Woosley, for the record, I did have a conversation with the applicant representative, and I also received an email. And I visited the site.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site, talked with the applicant's representative, and received email.
Commissioner Stapleton, I visited the site and had conversations with the applicant's representatives.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site, I received the email, and spoke with applicant's representative.
Commissioner Wyskey, I also spoke with the applicant's representative. I spoke with the applicant himself. I received an email, and I visited the site.
Commissioner Stapleton, I also received an email. Thank you. Commissioner Locke, I visited the site, received the email, and spoke with the applicant's representative. Okay, at this time, do we have anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment? Seeing and hearing none. I'll close this portion of public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Do we have questions? A motion?
I'll make a motion. I would like to say upfront, though, I'm glad to see that something's being done down here. It's right next to the Reno Arch. It's really kind of bad to have a vacant property right there. And so I'm glad to see that we're moving forward and improving the neighborhood. In the case of LDC 140005, Prim Gaming, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend that the city council approve the special use permit subject to conditions. And the change that's been presented for condition number five regarding the eight parking, off-site parking spaces.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Reno. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Wyskey, I'll second the motion. I'm in agreement with the amendment to condition number five. And I also am glad to see Prim Gaming coming back to town and opening up business and moving forward with it. Good luck.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show that there are six in favor and none opposed. Good luck with your project. At this time, we will take a short recess. If we could, hello? Reconvene the meeting? Thank you. Okay, moving on. Action item number six, under public hearings, TXT 12-00009, Midtown District. Let's see, I guess we're going to hear from staff.
Jody Roy, Goodwin, for the record. So this is the adoption of the text amendments as a result of the city council-initiated master plan amendment to establish the Midtown District, which was accomplished a while ago. Anyway, so the proposed text amendments include the establishment of zoning or of allowable uses within the district by both residential section and commercial section. The narrative piece of it, for lack of a better word, establishes some purpose, the design standards, setbacks, density allowances, hours of operation. Most, there's a lot more detail, I think, for the commercial section, but it does establish the density for the residential section as well as hours of operations in each section so that there are, the compatible, compatibility of the uses that go within, since it's an entirely mixed-use area. As you know, we've had a number of meetings on the topic. We had three neighborhood meetings, and then we had a planning commission meeting and two workshops, and now we're back again. And we've had a few, I've had a few conversations with additional people, and since then, mostly just checking up on what the status is and no real comments about problems at this point. And I'll answer any questions, because I feel like we've kind of beaten this horse.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Thanks, Sharon. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open public comment. And I would like to read into the record a letter from Chuck Shaw. Okay. It says, "Dear Commissioners, on behalf of the owners of the Virginia Street Plaza, we wish to thank you and the City of Reno planning staff for your tireless efforts on the Midtown zoning district approval before you this evening. The community planning process is difficult, especially with the equally passionate and diverse voices of Reno's Midtown District. You have listened, balanced, and literally arbitrated the needs of this community to what each of you believe is in the best interest of this dynamic neighborhood. As tonight's vote is a cause of celebration, we respectfully remind the commission that this process is not yet complete, as amendments to the zoning code must follow this approval. As the zoning code amendments come before you for your future consideration, we ask the commission to remember the request for a mix of diverse and desired allowed uses with the intent to enhance Midtown's quality of life and overall economic vitality. By example, Midtown would benefit greatly from a catalyst project to enhance its overall livability. Such a project will require some flexibility from the document that's before you this evening, a concern that can be addressed in the zoning code amendments to follow. Regarding new and redevelopment efforts, the City of Reno benefits from a talented community development department who, from the planning and building team perspective, do all they can to incentivize quality, well-conceived projects. However, these teams cannot overcome the burden of overall development costs, which has resulted in making most new projects economically unviable. Total development costs remains the greatest barrier to new and redevelopment efforts in Midtown and the City of Reno. This is an issue the commission cannot resolve today, but can be aware of and sensitive to in the future. In closing, we respectfully request that you continue to support planning staff for the effort that will be required to complete the upcoming zoning code amendments, and congratulate you again for your work to complete Reno's Midtown Zoning District. Sincerely, Chuck Shaw, Virginia Street Plaza Managing Member, Fight Development Company, Partner." Okay, at this time, Bernie, would you like to speak?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Bernie Carter, and I represent 701 South Virginia Street LLC. And we are part of the development in the Midtown area, probably the largest commercial...
Bernie, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but we need to start the three-minute timer. So you do have three minutes, but you just got some extra.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. You want me to quiet for, no, okay. After, after going through a number of meetings for some, like the time with the commission, with the, with the public, I'm addressing two issues. And that deals with the density issue, the FAR, the coverage, which I'm requesting at .25. And that was part of our discussion at the last one. And the second one deals with the landscaping requirement. The landscaping requirement is currently at 20%, and I'm requesting that that be removed down to 5%. I have a couple of examples here. Now, this is an example that we redid based on our last meeting that shows the sidewalk at 10% as opposed to 18%, which is part of the proposal. The 20% landscaping, pedestrian access, leaving a building area of 2,500 square feet out of a 6,000 square foot lot. That means that you've got a 42% coverage area. And it also includes parking off of the alley area, and is what is, would be in effect under the current proposal. We are requesting the landscaping go down to 5% and have several examples that we would like to show you of landscaping that's in the front of the building. This is in front of the Strummel Gallery Building, and their complex, their office complex that's directly south of that. Their parking is, in addition, is off the back, but the access is off of South Virginia Street. You can see that they've got four feet of landscape, six feet of sidewalk, and 80 foot of length, which breaks down to less, less than 5%, about 3% or 4%. And we, but we believe that a 5% criteria would be appropriate in our area. The FAR that we're currently talking about is .25. This is our current project, the Sticks Project, which has an FAR of .5. And some of the buildings will be two stories as a result of that requirement. We believe that economic development in our community, particularly in the Midtown area, merits a .25, which gives us the flexibility to build a dynamic, interactive, and unusual buildings, which is what we're doing in the Sticks Projects. So that was my only request. Other than that, I believe staff has done a tremendous job. And you'll, all you commissioners have too, the number of meetings that we've attended, the input, the consideration, and I truly appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who wishes to speak, Gary Radon from Marmot Properties.
Thank you. My name is Gary Radon with Marmot Properties. I'm also a resident of Midtown. And again, I'd like to echo the, you know, we really appreciate the hard work that's gone into this, and, and we know it's been very contentious. We've come to, I've come to a lot of the meetings, and my brothers and partners have been to a lot of the meetings as well. And you've probably had just about enough of us. But one last chance to come before the committee and just voice our concern and our opposition to the downzoning of the area loosely defined between west of Virginia and east of Pluma Street. We oppose the downzoning of that to MF 21. We believe that MF 30 is more appropriate. We believe that in that area, typical lot of .16, that zoning would result in having the ability to put about four units there. Our primary opposition is because we believe very firmly that greater density close to Virginia in the residential areas equals greater, greater economic growth along Virginia and throughout the Midtown area. We're big believers in the idea that rooftops drive business, and we've all seen what the density in that area has done for Midtown, and great projects and great things that have been happening in there. And we believe that going down to an MF 21 is going in the exact opposite direction of what we're trying to accomplish in Midtown. Again, I thank you very much for your hard work and for putting up with us and listening to us and working with us and all of this, and we look forward to continuing our work in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Angela Watson.
Hi. Thanks, you guys, so much for hearing me. I have come before you guys several times and worked with the staff on working towards having the MF21, which is in there now, and I'm very much in support of that. But I'm also here on another subject. I do want to see the plan put forward to Council as it is. I think it's wonderful. I think that everybody has worked really hard, and I think that is the direction that we've heard from the people that have participated in the workshops, that that's what we would like. It has been brought to my attention that in oversight, we kind of forgot about something that's also happening in that area, and that is pertaining to special events. I've learned since my introduction to this subject that maybe this is a different forum, but I just kind of wanted to let you guys know that we, I'm a representative of the Midtown District and also the Creative Coalition of Midtown, and I plan on talking to them about the subject of special events and street closures in this area. Working within the TOD for these type of things is a little different, a little difficult. I've been planning some special events, and it have, we've run into some roadblocks, timelines, reducing some of those, maybe changing some of the fees would be great. So, when we get this plan, the next step to the city, I would like to talk about some of those things to the city, and I just kind of wanted to let you guys know, after all the work that we've put forward with this, I will be bringing one more subject to the table, and maybe we can do some fee reductions and things to help special events happen and street closures happen with the popularity of Midtown. And that's all. Thank you so much for your guys' time.
Thank you.
If I can just jump in really quick there. Claudia Hansen, planning and engineering manager. As Angela mentioned, I think she was just informing you of the special events issues, those regulations are contained in the administrative code, not in Title 18, so you do not have the authority over that section of code.
Thank you, Claudia.
And that will be raised with city council.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission. Do we have any questions for staff?
Commissioner Stapleton, I have a question for staff, and what I believe is a clarification. Both Mr. Radon and Ms. Watson said that this was a downzoning to MF21, but if I am correct, this is not a downzoning to MF21. This makes MF30 an allowed density with an SUP. Is that correct?
Jody Royal-Goodwin for the record, yes. So, between, in the commercial section, it's a minimum of 18 units per acre, 18, yes. And then in the residential section, it's 20, maximum of 21 up to 30 with an SUP.
Okay. I just want to make that clear, because that's something we really worked on a lot and had a lot of conversation around, and if there's opposition to the SUP attached to that, which just creates additional public oversight, that's one thing, but an MF30 density is still allowed in this area, so I think that's an important clarification. And that's the only question that I had, except I would add to address Ms. Watson's comments on special events, that that's something you'd have to bring to city council, but sounds like an important point. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stapleton, any other questions?
Commissioner Reno. Yeah, quick question on this, you know, what Mr. Carter brought up about the landscaping and the FAR. I know there've been a lot of negotiations on this and how it works out and what the FAR is, and I understand that we want more development going upward and just more square footage down there, and I can understand why the FAR is where it is. The landscaping, I'm still a little concerned about that. I thought that was a little excessive myself, but I wasn't at the last meeting, unfortunately, I had other obligations. I was gonna bring that up, but I think five may be too little, but I do think that the 20 may be excessive, so.
So, we have some diagrams as well, which were asked for at the last meeting too.
Yes.
And I'll try to make this make sense. So, the first one, and if there are questions, you're probably gonna have to ask Claudia, because this is way too technical for me, but the first one is a one-story .25 FAR And both buildings are .25 FAR, right?
Yes, it's the, I can't read it from here.
Mary Street?
It is at Mary and Virginia is the example parcels, but it's the, the footnotes are above and below the diagrams. And I just, if you can read it, I can't read it from here.
It's .25 FAR and 23% landscaping.
So, these, these two parcels kept coming up during discussions. Can you scoot that over just a little bit, Jody? Just so it's all on there. There we go, thanks. So, this was looking at those, the .25 with 23% landscaping, and that's really the minimum amount of landscaping. You've got the five feet on the side and the street trees on the upper parcel, and then five feet, the parkway on Mary, the five-foot required strip next to parking, and then the street trees, and that gets you at 23%. And that's with a little patch in the back also that, we weren't sure if you're gonna have half that building, half that parcel open and there's no parking allowed, what else would be there? And then landscaping, and that area could be, you know, a mixture of hardscape and plant material.
Do you want to see other ones?
Do you have one at .5?
I have one at 12. I'll keep looking.
I guess my concern is, I mean, we want more, more buildings down there, more, more people really down there, and I agree landscaping's important, maybe there's some creative ways for landscaping, but, I mean, isn't 20% if I recall, isn't that professional office building? Isn't that the requirement for professional office buildings?
In the, in the South Virginia Street TOD, it is the requirement for anything that's less than one FAR.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just recommend to reduce that a little, maybe to 15% or
Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiskey, question for Bernie. Bernie, would you bring your photograph back up of the Stremel Building, where you showed the front of it? And did you bring any photographs of the back of it?
I did not. The back of it, excuse me, the back of it is 100% driving, and then there's a small strip that's 4% also, or, excuse me, that's four feet, that's between the sidewalk and the parking area.
There is some parking back there, as I recall.
It's all parking across the street.
And there is landscaping back there also.
That's correct.
So, that's part of the percentage.
Right.
So, it's more than just what you're showing here on the front and using it, saying it's just 4% of landscaping on the building.
No, the 4% is the foot, the feet that are across the front of the building.
Right.
And then there's a driveway that has no landscaping at all, an access driveway, and then on the backside of the building, there's a strip of landscaping between the sidewalk and the parking area.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that's what I, that's what I wanted to hear you say.
Right.
Because to answer Commissioner Reno's question a little better and to clarify it, that, again, goes back to the sketches that staff just showed us, where there is landscaping in the back of the building, and it increases the percentage of landscaping. So, to reduce the amount of landscaping, basically, essentially what you're doing is you could be eliminating the landscaping on one side of the building, where you could be picking up your additional percentage. I believe, and I have a question for staff to this, that if there's parking in the back, I believe that there's some kind of landscaping required back there also. Claudia, would you like to address that?
That's correct. It shows, Jody, if you can put up, any of the diagrams shows it. It's five feet adjacent to the parking spaces on the side, which will count towards your percentage. So, you can see the parking spaces there off of the alley, and they have a five-foot strip on the north and south ends of them. So, that would count towards your landscaping.
So, that adds to the landscaping, and that's how staff gets a much greater number in their sketch than what we're seeing from the community at this time in design. So, if, if you take what Mr. Carter showed in his, in his rendering of a building, Bernie, do you have that with you also?
Sorry, which one?
The, the dimension, the sketch that you had of a layout?
This.
No, not that one, not, not the photograph, the one that your summer intern did for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that, that one right there. See, there's, there's additional, in that drawing, there's additional landscaping required to the backside of that drawing where the parking spaces are. So, actually, what Mr. Carter is showing us here, he's concerned with what's on the street frontage, and those numbers may not work, but he's not fulfilling what code or ordinance requires right now by adding additional square footage to the parking area, which is going to increase the percentage. When that's added in there, he's a lot closer to 20% than I think his, the calculations that were given to him.
Commissioner Wiskey, and just to piggyback on that, it also forces a little more creativity as far as beautification of the actual building, because you can actually have landscape count on the building, correct?
Yeah, there's some, if you go through the rest of the diagrams there. I just threw, so here's a 1.0, I think that one is.
.75.
.75, so .75 FAR with 12% landscaping. So, the southern parcel, the one at Mary and Virginia, a parcel, a building covering most of the buildable area, and then a garage of some sort, and then just your five feet of landscaping again. You'll see the landscaping where the garage is located, up against the property line, there is no five feet of landscaping, because it's structure. Structure has zero. If it's parking, it's five feet setback with landscaping. So, you're gonna hit 12% landscaping on this. The upper parcel would be mostly building in the buildable area, a three-car garage with a potential apartment up above, and this would just some, just throw out some ideas of potential development types that could go in there and meeting and exceeding the landscape requirement. And in the, on page 87 of the proposed ordinance, it shows the, you had asked us to come back with a scale, and we put some numbers in that we wrote down, were some possibilities at the last workshop. So, it's the table at the top of page 87, showing if it's greater than a FLORE ratio of 1.0, it would be 5% landscaping. If it's .75 to 1, it'd be 10%, and then anything below .75 would be a 20% landscaping requirement. So, those were the numbers. We, a lot of numbers were tossed around at the last workshop, these, I just threw some diagrams together showing some examples, and then tried to take, get an average of the numbers that were being discussed at the last meeting.
Follow-up question, Commissioner Wiskey for Claudia. Hardscape is considered part of the landscaping?
Up to 50% if it's an integrated feature.
Okay. So, in, in some of that, creative walkways can be, which are ADA accessible, can be used for that, to get to that 20% landscaping, if it's less than a .75 FAR. It can be used at any point above that to help get to that 10% or 5%. So, hopefully, that helps, I mean, I, I kind of like these numbers, and Mr. Carter, I don't disagree with you that, you know, we're, you know, it's, building commercially is about square footage to get rental income and to get revenue and a tax base coming in, but I don't know that the percentages are that far off. And, and that's my comments, and that's why you hear me saying what I'm saying tonight.
And I appreciate that, Commissioner. This project, which is a .50, could not be built today under these requirements. It couldn't.
I disagree with that. I think with a little bit of more creative thinking, you could get to the 20% landscaping, because you can include building landscaping, you can include hardscape. To get to that 20% with, with walkways, there's different things that could be done.
I believe that we do, and Claudia, I forget what the landscaping requirement was. Do you remember what that was? I know that whatever it was, we meet that criteria. I don't think it was 20%, because, was it 20%? But the FAR for this would be .5. So, if we went to a .75 or anything above .5, we couldn't build this project today. You couldn't build the street, you couldn't build the interest, you couldn't build the specific buildings that we're building, you couldn't build the design that you were doing with, with that criteria. You would have to get rid of the courtyard area, you'd have to get rid of a bunch of the sidewalks, and you end up with just a mass of building. And that's not what Midtown's about, in my opinion. Keep in mind that our objective is to have small, independent mom-and-pops be able to place their businesses there. We're not going to have McDonald's, we're not going to have, and that's, and I, I request that you do, under any circumstances, get this approved tonight, because we've already had that occur, where we've had a location in Midtown that went to a use that would not be approved on this, with these plans, because of us not having it implemented. So, I do request we do that.
Is that, let me interrupt you real quick. Is that, is that for a new building or for an existing building? Because if you're not adding on to an existing building, then I don't believe, Claudia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought in previous discussions, if they did not do a new building or increase the square footage, they did not have to meet the new landscape requirements if they didn't have the available space for it.
The landscape requirements kicks in for a brand-new building.
For a brand-new building.
Yeah, everything comes into play for a brand-new building. And then for any expansion, depending on where that expansion's going, if it's, if you're already covering the whole property and it's going up, you obviously can't meet that.
Right.
If there's a possibility, then it would be an incremental increase, depending on the amount of square footage and where it's going.
Okay. So, you know, I mean, if there, if, if a property, and I can think of several in Midtown that, that go property line to property line, then, you know, that's, then that is waived.
It is. I'd like to point out this particular property, which is Sticks, or, excuse me, which is Sup. Sup would not be able to put, put the deck on that they have now to meet that criteria, that's my understanding at least. And their deck is where it's located, because at that time, there was an 18-foot setback requirement. And so, they're 18 feet before they could put their deck, and without that deck, they're not economically viable. They have to have the deck in order to be viable. These are the real-life considerations we need to think about.
Question for staff. Are developers prohibited from requesting a variance to the landscaping, so that if they show a particular hardship of why they can't meet that 20%, that, that they need it at 15% or 12%?
They can apply for a variance.
Okay. So, the variance is still available to the developers then?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Wiskey, for clarifying some things, and I appreciate that, because, especially in the hardscape, that was the next question I was gonna have, and you got, you got to there before, before I did. A quick question for staff, maybe Claudia, maybe you'll be the one to answer this, but parking spaces, could that be considered hardscape? Could you, could you do something with parking spaces to include that in the landscaping somehow? And?
I can't think of what.
Well, you know, we, we had a situation over, I'm an engineer and I did something for Manor Care, where we put those concrete blocks down, they kind of ended up being a driveway and parking spot, but grass could grow in between the concrete blocks, and so it was kind of an interesting situation, and I'm just wondering if that could be used. You know, the little diamond shapes, people drive on them, you can put?
Right. They, it would, it would have to be a material that's approved by the city engineer, because that's not standard paving material.
Okay.
And then if any emergency vehicle were intended to use that, they, we would not approve it, because they would not allow that.
Okay.
So, it just depends on the situation.
And then, just another quick question. You guys can vary it by 10%, correct? With kind of a review process?
There's a minor deviation process, which is up to 10%, so 9.9%.
Up to 10%. Okay. So, I just want to make sure, and that's clear, and that we can go through the variance process. So, I think, I think there's enough ways that people can, developers or so forth, can make it happen if they have a really difficult situation. Thanks.
Is there any other questions, or do we want to bring it back for discussion? Is there any other questions, or do we want to bring it back for discussion? Or a motion?
Commissioner Wieski, I do have a discussion slash question for staff. Kind of going back on the subject of, for the variance, do you need a hardship, or can they prove creative thinking outside the box where they believe it's a good enough plan to bring it forward?
That's a nice question, but they would need to show a hardship.
They would need to show a hardship. Okay, thanks.
I have another question really quick. Commissioner Reno, for the record. As far as landscaping on the building, how does that work, and how much can be counted towards landscaping?
Landscaping on the building?
Yeah.
We've interpreted that landscaping on the building would be, we could count that as long as it's visible from, to the public. So, recently, we had a structure downtown that had a second-story deck area, and they installed potted trees and planters along the edge of it, so it was visible from the public. If it's interior, no. If you can't see it from the street, no. But if, if it is visible from the street, we would count that as square footage.
Okay, thanks.
Or open to the public.
Okay. Are there any more questions, or can we let Jody sit down? Okay, any more discussion? Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, and I appreciate the questions and insights of Commissioner Wieski and Commissioner Reno, and I agree with the perspective that I think what we've got in here is sufficient. I think it's flexible in terms of the more density, the less landscaping. I think that's important. If you have a really low density, you're going to have to have some landscaping. It's a, it's a commercial, you know, urban-ish corridor, and, you know, the example of soup is a good outlier. It's a, it's a single-family home essentially, and that's a development, that type that is an exception, I think, in this corridor. And, you know, we've discussed, there are some alternatives for being able to deal with that exception. But in terms of new development, we don't want to incentivize the development of single-family homes in this, in this corridor. We want to incentivize a little bit more urban, mixed-use, walkable, that's the idea. You know, looking at the design in front of us, you know, I get, I get where Bernie's going, and I, I think the design fits. I just think, you know, it's, it's got to maybe be a little denser, or the landscaping's got to be creative. But I agree with the language in the plan as it's written.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I have to agree with Commissioner Stapleton, and in the case of soup, I think soup is a great example that you brought up tonight. And under tonight's, under what's being proposed tonight, and will go before City Council in the near future, if a variance were to come before me for the landscaping to be greater than what is allowed by ordinance, I would support it, knowing that it's a single-story house that was built 50, 60 years ago. Somebody is trying to keep it there and refurbish it and reuse it, similar to what you've done, Mr. Carter, with multiple, multiple different properties. I understand it's an additional step for the developer to ask for that variance. But the person that's not a developer like yourself and doesn't understand what this process is, goes in and buys a small property, tears it down, and then wants to put that new building on it, they have, they have no reason not to meet some of the different layouts that had been proposed to us that aren't really designed, but they're options. They're, they're things that are available, that staff has shown to us. And because of that, I, I like what staff has brought to us tonight. And in the case of the Commercial District, I'm, I'm in favor of it as it's proposed, because I, I think things can be done, and if they can't, a true developer knows that he has additional steps to come back to us and say, "Look, here's what I want to do, here's why it works, here's why it doesn't work, please consider this for me." And I, I believe that future commissions, planning commissions will, will also be in support of, of listening to that with open ears and open eyes. As far as residential, I'm, I'm pleased with the way everything was brought forward. I believe that, again, a developer coming in has an option. It's not excluded to go to MF30. There's an avenue to be traveled for that. Consideration, depending which piece of property it is, what the neighboring properties are, that'll all be a consideration, and that, that'll be a consideration that a developer, a residential developer will make before he comes and asks for MF30 on an SUP. So, I'm, I'm going to support exactly what's been proposed to us tonight without any modifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd just like to say a few comments here. You know, I know that there's been a lot of work put into what we have before us tonight, and, and I can comfortably support it because things, there are avenues, and there are ways for developers and development to, to go forward and be creative and make things happen. And I appreciate the discussion that ensued tonight. So, I, I will be in support of this as is written. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Locke, for the record.
I will be able to support this, I guess, particular item. I've, I came into the process sort of halfway through, but just driving down Virginia Street to get here tonight from Moana to here, this is, this is impressive. I mean, I am, I'm so impressed with this report and all the work and the city and the way everyone's worked together, and it's just really evolving into something quite remarkable. So, that's exciting, and I can, you know, get on board with this, and I especially appreciate the grading system and the landscaping, because that was, that was real important to me. It looks, looks great.
Does anybody else have anything they want to say? Comments?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make one more comment if I could. This process has taken a while. I've sat through a few meetings. I have half of a two-inch binder before me right now that only has the last three meetings of paperwork in it. I have another three-inch binder at home that's full of the meetings that we've had, and I haven't thrown anything away on this project, because I wanted for historical, I kind of wanted to see where we were going, because there was a lot of discussions and a lot of important information from you, the community, the developers, the residents, the business people, everybody. Very, very important. And when you go back and you look through five inches of paperwork and modifications that have been brought forward through the community, the business community, the developers, and the, and the residents, it's phenomenal. We, as Planning Commission, dove into a couple of key issues that I thought were brought forward to us to help resolve and help get to a reasonable understanding on that, that maybe with more time, you guys would have come to the same conclusions, but it was time to start moving this forward and getting it ready for a City Council consideration. My hat's off to the, to the entire community. You guys did something that is fantastic. I hope you're very proud of it, and I'm proud to support you guys in what's before us tonight. So, thank you.
Before we make a motion, do we want to have disclosures, just to be on the safe side? Anybody?
Commissioner Stapleton, I have a disclosure. I live one, I own property and reside one block from the eastern, from one of the boundaries of the Midtown District. So, I am within, that would make me within 700 feet. That's my disclosure. I don't think that that creates a conflict for me.
Rob Boni, City Attorney's Office. You're saying it doesn't create a conflict, you're acting fair and impartially in your decision-making process this evening?
Those are the words I was striving for. I believe I can make a fair and impartial decision on that.
I believe you're fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stapleton, anyone else?
Commissioner Wieski, I have been through the neighborhoods countless times as we've had questions, and different propositions have been made. I have been through the Commercial District and done business with several of the businesses to see how they're operating, to see what, in my opinion, could work better based upon some of the propositions that have been brought before us, and I have spoke with some of the business owners.
Thank you. Commissioner Locke, I have also, you know, walked the area and spoken with, with different residents as to where they would like to see Midtown go. I think that's important to say.
I'll disclose that, I mean, I don't know that it really matters, but just in case somebody questions it. I did support Bernie in this last election bid, but it should, it has no bearing on what I'm doing here and my decisions. So, I just want to make that clear. Thanks.
Commissioner Wieski, I'd just like to disclose that I have a high interest in the area, just because I work in the area, I visit it almost every workday, and I have just, spoke with a lot of owners and just people in the area, and have a vested interest, and that's why I think that between staff, the community, business owners, and, and us have taken the time to really think out a lot of the issues, and I'm, I'm happy with what's been presented forward today, and I can support this.
Great. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Olivas for disclosures. I don't, we always disclose visiting the site and, and I don't know how much it counts, but I've driven through there and bought, walked through there countless times, and before and after I've been on the commission, and certainly have a different viewpoint now that I've been participating and paying attention with a different eye as I've gone through there. And I guess, I don't know if that's considered visiting the site, but it's certainly much more interesting to go through there.
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll make a motion if everybody's ready.
Go ahead.
I'm proud of the work that's been done on this plan and of all the participation and good conversations, both my fellow commissioners and the stakeholders, and I just want to thank everybody. And with that, I would make a motion in case number TXT 12-00009, Midtown District, based on compliance with the applicable findings. I move to recommend that the City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance, and I can make the findings. I can make both of the findings.
Madam Chairwoman, Commissioner Wieski, I will second it, and I can make all of the findings.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Let the record show, we have six in favor, none opposed.
Madam Chairwoman, also, if I can add, you know, what Jody's done, what, what staff overall has done, goes along with what we were discussing earlier with hot topics and where staff is kind of going, communications is kind of going. This shows that the more input staff gets from the community and a little bit of time, things work really well. And, and took a lot of patience and a lot of meetings, a lot more than my five inches of paperwork, I know, for Jody, to get to this point, and congratulations.
And I'd like to jump in and personally thank Jody. We could not have gotten here without her. She's got a very full plate in her regular duties, and we're very appreciative of her making the effort and doing a great job in the Midtown ordinance.
Thank you all. It was a great learning experience. Thanks for not beating me up.
Too much.
Okay, with that, we can move on to item number eight, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning liaison report.
And with that item, we are looking for a recommendation for an alternate to serve on the, to potentially serve on the Regional Planning Commission. Anyone?
I'll make a recommend, make a recommendation. We nominate, or I nominate Paula Olivas for that position. It's, it's one meeting every other month, usually lasts between 15 minutes and an hour. It's opposite Wednesday nights of our, what our meeting is on the month when we have two meetings.
And that's alternate position, so that's not every meeting, then?
Correct. That would be if one of our, if one of the regular members cannot make it.
Okay.
Can't make it next time?
You can't make it next time? I could be an alternate.
Update, our next regional planning meeting is next Wednesday night, 6 o'clock, Washoe County Chambers. They, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning had a workshop and meeting today where they updated the Regional Governing Board, I believe it was, on industrial land available. If you guys have any, especially those of you who are involved in engineering, have an opportunity to get together with the director, Kim, it's, or any of the, like Sierra, Siena, I'm sorry, Siena, get together with them to get that information. There was great information on available industrial properties and the projection of how long it'll be before we run out of industrial properties, the way our current zoning is. It was a great presentation, and, and I recommend you guys all dig into it if you have an interest.
I know you've asked for informational items to, like we had with Deanna earlier today. That could be a topic, if you're interested, we could ask them to come and give you probably an abbreviated version of that presentation. It's a very lengthy presentation.
It's a lot of deals.
But maybe they give you an outline of that at a future meeting, if you so choose.
Commissioner Stapleton, for the record, I think that would be a really interesting presentation to have. Unfortunately, I had to miss it today, and I was appointed to regional planning, and my first meeting would be next week, and I have to be out of town for work, so it would be great if we had an alternate who could go next Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else to say on this topic? Do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, if we could get a motion regarding Commissioner Olivas, and that would be a recommendation to City Council for appointment.
Madam Chairwoman, Commissioner Wieski, I make a motion that nomination of Paula Olivas be made to City Council as an alternate to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Let the record show, six to none, six approve, none oppose. Okay, moving on. Staff announcements.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
A quick, quick, Commissioner Reno, I would like to make that suggestion for a future agenda item, to have a presentation, abbreviated presentation on the zoning of the industrial areas in the city of Reno, if that could be included. I think somebody had to make that kind of recommendation, correct?
That's coming up on the agenda, item number, item 10, on the agenda's future.
Oh, I apologize.
That's right.
I'll do it then.
Okay. So, on staff announcements, at a previous meeting, I can't remember if it was the last one or not, there was some question on the bylaws for the Planning Commission. I gave you each a copy of that tonight, and I think in particular, the question was, one of the questions was the order to hear presentations, and Article 6 on the bottom of page 3, section number one says the commission may rearrange the order- "The commission may rearrange the order of consideration of items if necessary for the expeditious conduct of business." So it, section number two does outline a typical way to hear it, but you do have the ability to change that. We, we added that flexibility at the last time in. So I think that earlier version we had was probably not a correct version. So that, that one is in there. And you each have a copy of that, and I can get that to you electronically if you so wish. And as far as council, yesterday, we only had one item on there which didn't come before you. I don't think ever. It was an expansion of the Costco gas station that was approved by Board of Adjustment back in 2002, I believe it was, and was denied an appeal to council, and therefore the amendment to it to expand the gas station went directly to council. So it's, it's a project, if you see it going into construction, it never came before the Planning Commission. It just, it's the way it happened on Harvard, near Plum, yes. And that is the only one. The gas-light project is still going through the appeal, multiple appeal processes, and that is going to council on the 25th, the number of the appeals are. And I will keep you posted on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, number 10, Commissioners' Suggestions for Future Agenda Items.
Commissioner Reno, I'll make the suggestion to have an abbreviated presentation of the zoning of industrial areas in the city of Reno.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yes, Commissioner Stapleton, I would love that. I would really, I would love it. I mean that. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show, six in favor, none opposed. Okay, item, next item, public comment. This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general public comment and not per comment on individual action items contained on this agenda. Do I have any public comments? Seeing and hearing none? I'll bring it back to the commission for possible motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that. Commissioner Reno?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.